Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors regular session for Thursday, November 19th, 7:30 PM. Just a reminder, our recording device will be used during this meeting, and I'm going to start the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I do want to give everybody a heads up. Jason and myself would just discuss this. We are one supervisor short tonight, so we are going to table the Carlino Development Agreements tonight. So I wanted everybody who was here just for that reason, first of all, not to have to sit through an entire meeting to get to that point. So I wanted to give you guys that opportunity. If you did choose to leave, now's a good time if you didn't want to sit through the entire meeting. But again, just a reminder, we're one supervisor short, and Jason and I just conferred, and we agreed that we would hold this off until we, I guess, find a better date. I'm going to open the meeting today with the Service Recognition Awards, and I'm going to turn this over to Chief.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Cosi. I'm the Chief of Police for East Brandywine Township. I have a number of recognitions to give out tonight, and the first one I'm going to start with is Officer Bo Shepherd. On the morning of September 25th, 2019, at 06:58 hours, the County Township Police Department and ALS/BLS medical units were dispatched to East Fisherville Road for a suspected drug overdose. Officer Shepherd of the East Brandywine Township Police Department responded to assist and was the first to arrive on location. Once on location, Officer Shepherd located a female patient lying face up on the bedroom floor with agonal breathing, and it was blue in the face. After assessing that the patient was in opioid distress, Officer Shepherd administered a dose of Narcan. There was no change to the patient's condition. Officer Shepherd and arriving County Township police officers reassessed the patient, and a second dose of Narcan was administered by Officer Shepherd. Arriving medical units immediately took over care of the patient by establishing an airway and providing emergency treatment. The patient began to regain consciousness and return to normal breathing. The patient was removed to the hospital for further evaluation. Officer Bo Shepherd with the assistance of the County Township Police and responding medical personnel are to be commended for their quick and calm actions while on the performance of duty and for administering first aid which prevented the death of another person. I'd like to ask firefighter Nick Proko, firefighter Alex Italiano, Officer Tanner Smith, and Sergeant Mark Twiddell to come forward. Well, the evening of October 2nd at 23:58 hours, the East Brandywine Township Police Department, East Brandywine Fire Department, and ALS/BLS medical units were dispatched to Corner Catch Road for a suspected drug overdose. Upon arriving on location, Police Sergeant Mark Twiddell and Officer Tanner Smith found a male patient face down on the bathroom floor. Assessing that the patient was in opioid distress, officers administered a dose of Narcan. When the patient's condition showed no sign to change, officers administered a second dose. Shortly after the second dose, the patient showed signs of labored breathing. East Brandywine Fire Company QRS 49 personnel EMT Nick Proko and firefighter Alex Italiano arrived and took over care of the patient, establishing an airway and providing emergency care. Further assessment by the QRS personnel resulted in the patient being administered an additional dose of Narcan. After three doses of Narcan, the patient regained consciousness and returned to normal breathing. The patient was removed to the hospital for further evaluation. Sergeant Mark Twiddell, Officer Tanner Smith, EMT Nick Proko, and firefighter Alex Italiano are to be commended for their quick and calm actions while on the performance of duty and for administering first aid which prevented the death of another person. Congratulations to all. Finally, I have a presentation to make to Sergeant Mark Twiddell, Sergeant Glenn Mooney, Sergeant Jim Ferraro, and Corporal Steve Tyree. I'm not going to drag this one out, and I don't want to make them sweat up here, but this is a rare night because for the first time in my career, I have the honor of recognizing four of the, I guess, elder members of the police department for 20 years of service to East Brandywine Township, the residents and the police department. I've been here 17, so I can honestly say that we've been through a lot in 17 years. I know they've been a lot in 20 years, but I want to thank all four of you for your dedication to the township, the sacrifices that you make each day that you go out there, not only, you know, with your families, not being there for holidays and stuff, but also for the service that you provide the residents of the township and protecting their lives each and every day. I'll read their recognitions. To each of you, you are hereby recognized for 20 years of mandatory service as a police officer with the East Brandywine Township Police Department, Chester County, Pennsylvania. We thank you and commend you for your sacrifices, dedication, professionalism, while serving the residents of East Brandywine Township. And on behalf of the township, we also are presenting each one of the officers with a engraved thank you from the township for their service. Thank you very much, guys. See you tomorrow.
Thanks for your service. Thank you. One hand shaking. Thank you, Chief. I'm going to turn it over now for the Energy Transfer Donation to EB Youth Athletics.
As the room clears. So, that's a hard act to follow, but I wanted to thank Energy Transfer very much for coming out tonight. They have been kind enough to grant East Brandywine Youth Athletics with a check and a donation for $5,000 tonight. It's a very generous contribution that will allow us to make huge changes in many of the lives of the youth in this township and in the surrounding townships. So, we can't say thank you very enough, and so at that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Yeah, I don't really have much. To be honest with you, you know, we're working on the Mariner East Pipeline. Comes right across Pennsylvania from Eastern Ohio, bringing product into Marcus Hook. A lot of it's propane, it'll be used to be distributed locally. But we do have some, obviously, we employ a lot of people across the state, and we do have some coaches in the league. You know, we're employed by YAW, so they reached out to us about some, you know, improvements, and we wanted to help out. That's kind of why we're here, and I'm sure you've all dealt with some of the truck traffic from our operations, but I assure you, our pipeline is, hopefully, will be complete within the next year or so. And, you know, obviously, baseball's a pastime of American history, and, you know, we're happy to make a donation to support the local community that we're a part of. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to Catherine, too. We traded emails for the last few months trying to nail this down, so it's been tough, but I'm glad we can make it happen.
Thank you very much for all your support. All right. We go on that. Magic. There you go. Hold on to my...
Get her cord. Yeah, 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 appreciate it.
All right, good. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's mine. Now, stay close.
Okay, thank you, guys. So now I'm going to open up the public comment for non-agenda items. Rules of conduct for public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. So open up public comment for non-agenda items. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Board of Supervisors, October 17th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the supervisor meeting minutes of October 17th.
All in favor? Aye. Treasurers' Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You'll forgive a few changes that were made to your first page of your report. I reorganized the way our assets appear. They're now sorted by whether or not they are encumbered. Just starting with the general fund, the balance is $1,059,029.62. The Traffic Impact Fee Fund is $1,632,312.27. The Open Space Referendum Fund is $2,381,698.86. The Open Space Fee and Lew, the Developer Open Space Fund, is $737,469.66. The Township's Capital Projects Funds total $648,123.79. And the State Fund, the Liquid Fuels Fund, is $182,195.26.
Thank you. Let's take a minute to make sure that the finances are in order. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the finances as presented?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. All right, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Pierceall for the Township Manager's Report.
Thank you. You didn't miss me this time. I wanted to provide an update to everybody regarding the intersection improvements to the Horseshoe Pike-Bollinger Road and Warren Lane intersection. Today, I learned from Alan Myers that their expectation to start paving on Bollinger Road and the south side of Horseshoe Pike that was to be starting tomorrow has been pushed back to Monday and Tuesday, November 25th and 26th. The work will include widening of Horseshoe Pike and also the paving of Bollinger Road. PennDOT does not permit the installation of the final wearing course, the asphalt wearing course, I'm sorry, after October 31st. So they're going to do the base course and binder courses for both Bollinger Road and Horseshoe Pike, and then reopen, they're still going to reopen Bollinger Road to traffic prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, as they've indicated for the last two weeks. The installation will also include line striping of the areas that are currently being paved. Because of the delays to the utility pole replacements along the north side of Horseshoe Pike for the Maple View Project, the widening on that side of the roadway will not be completed until the spring of 2020. Final wearing course of asphalt, the line striping, and final roadwork will be completed in the spring of 2020, and the installation of the traffic signal has not yet been scheduled. At our October 17th public meeting, I mentioned that we had participated in a class action lawsuit which began six years ago against the Verizon Group because of their failure to provide us with information on when we audited their franchise fees for cable TV service. Case settled recently. We'll receive an award of $10,000 from that once all the participating municipalities sign the agreement, which will basically release Verizon from any further legal action. It's part of the court settlement. It's been reviewed by Dan Cohen, who's the attorney that prosecuted the case, along with another firm from Pittsburgh. We're also currently working on a new franchise agreement with several other municipalities, and the Cohen Law Group is assisting us with that. That'll make enforcement issues such as the audit somewhat easier for the municipalities. The problem still is that Verizon is a very large company, and they have no problem with legal fees. Learned earlier this week that the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources recently awarded an $80,000 grant to the Brandywine Conservancy for public outreach, planning, and technical assistance to 25 municipal members of the Brandywine Creek Greenway, which of course, East Brandywine Township is one of those members. The grant will help implement small projects to improve parks, trails, open space, and other facilities along the Brandywine, both parts of the Brandywine, the eastern and west branches. And lastly, the Chester County Water Resources Authority is sponsoring three meetings in different locations in the county over the next several weeks to gather public input on the county's water plan, which they call watersheds, and the proposed revisions to the Countywide Act 167 Stormwater Management Plan. I know we've had several of our residents who've questioned this in the past, or recently, rather, and it's their opportunity to make comments. One word of caution, these are federal requirements, so changing them is not going to be easy. It's our understanding that there's a second round of federal regulations being proposed by the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, and they're expected to create further restrictions on stormwater management requirements at the local level. We don't know what those are yet, but I expect we'll find that out in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Revan for the Township Assistant Manager Report.
Yeah, following with my usual tradition, I have two upcoming events to announce before you next meet at your January regular session. First up, on December 1st, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, is the tree lighting ceremony hosted by the Township Parks and Recreation Committee. To get into the spirit of the season, when you attend the ceremony, please bring donations for Lord's Pantry, such as hats, mittens, socks, non-perishable food items, and if you do so, you will be entered for a chance to flip the switch and light the tree. There will be ornament making, and the Hopewell United Methodist Church singers. Homemade cookies, hot chocolate, and ornament making will be provided by Parks and Recreation Board and their families. I hope to see you there. There's a very special, we'll call it a fourth of three Fall Speaker Series. We have a special speaker coming up in December. It's December 8th, 3:30 PM. That's a Sunday. The subject will be William Still and the Underground Railroad. Please join us to learn about the nearly 9,000 runaway slaves who escaped to freedom using southeastern Pennsylvania's Underground Railroad Network. Our speaker will be Dr. William Cashdis, historian, educator, and former Director of Education and Public Programs at the Chester County Historical Society. Again, that's December 8th at 3:30 PM. Trail construction at the East Brandywine Township Park is now well underway. Asphalt work should begin tomorrow, and the entire project should be completed by the end of the week. Township staff sent letters to adjacent homeowners before the construction commenced to advise them that the work was about to begin. So this is the culmination of a number of years of work, both in the procurement of the land, fee simple, and the construction of this trail network, and I'm looking forward to having an official pedestrian connection between the Hopewell community and the community park for safe access to recreation opportunities. Lastly, this evening, I would extend one last invitation to the members of the board who may be interested in attending the Fall Chester County Association of Township Officials Conference, which will be on Thursday. I'm happy to register, take any last registrations, so thank you.
Thank you. And then Building Inspector's Report.
Yes. For the month of October, there were 20, I'm sorry, 40 building permits issued, one zoning permit issued. There were 19 use and occupancy permits issued. 100 inspections were completed. Total fees collected by the Building Department, $37,448.50, respectfully submitted by Rand King, Building Code Secretary.
Thank you. East Brandywine Police Department report, Chief.
I'm sorry, we skipped Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry. Matt, Roadmasters' Report.
Thank you. Mecca Constructors Incorporated completed our 2019 paving project, which included Hopewell Road from Rock Raymond Road to Creek Road, the entire length of East Fisherville Road and Zinn Road from East Reeseville Road to Hadfield Road. Project also included a concrete curb on Zinn Road from East Reeseville to the first entrance of the Country Club. Total cost of the project was $407,776.39. Last Thursday, Derek Klosz and I participated in PennDOT's Innovation Day. This is an opportunity for the municipal road departments and PennDOT to get together and share information that benefits both parties. Derek had a presentation table describing the spreader rack which the road department won first place in the state competition, and also won first place in the United States Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration. We were presented the plaque during the day, and during the day, I did a PowerPoint presentation on paving fabric, its uses, and its benefits. And the plaque that we were presented from the Federal Highway Administration is on the easel over there, along with the presentation that Derek was presenting. Lastly, the road department's in need of additional space. For the past four years, we've been planning for a garage through funding in the Public Works Capital Improvement Fund. This fund permits the township to set aside monies for special projects such as pavings of roads, purchasing major equipment and major construction. Road Department keeps all of our equipment at least 20 years. We have a John Deere 970, it's 30 years old, a John Deere 6200, which is 25 years old, and the 970 is used weekly during the mowing season. Storing this equipment indoors helps maintain the longevity. We're currently storing two trailers outside, and have two storage bins, storage containers with recycle bins and a salt spreader within that storage container. The 2019 budget, there was $400,000 allotted for design and construction of an 80-by-65 bay garage. And I was informed on Monday during our staff meeting that the $400,000 line item was removed from the budget. Disappointed that the board does not see the need for the garage, and I asked the board to reinstate the $400,000 line item for the much-needed garage so we can move forward design and construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Chief.
The police department has received its body worn cameras. Officers have completed the required training, and the vehicle equipment is scheduled to be installed this week. We anticipate that the body worn camera systems will be operational in use within the next two weeks. This Thursday, Lieutenant Yankanich, Officer Kyle Hornish, and I will be attending the PA Chiefs of Police Accreditation Meeting in Harrisburg to be recognized and receive the police department's new accreditation certificate. And again, I want to commend the police department for all their hard work and their outstanding achievement in obtaining accreditation again. The police department will be having its Second Annual Cookies with Cops event on Thursday night, December 12th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM here at the Township Building. We invite all the kids to come out, help decorate our holiday tree, and enjoy a night out of hanging out with the police officers, eating cookies and playing games. This month, the department recorded 2,210 incidents. We completed 235 investigations, had four criminal arrests, two summary arrests, four warrant arrests. There were no juvenile petitions. Twelve accidents investigated, 132 traffic citations were issued, 73 traffic warnings were issued, and officers logged 9,662 miles of patrol. Training completed for the month. As I mentioned, the entire department completed its body worn camera training. Officer Bo Shepherd completed Penn State's Field Training Officer Certification, and myself and Lieutenant Yankanich attended a seminar on advanced disciplinary procedures specifically regarding social media and the body worn cameras. You have copies of the monthly investigations and a copy of the officer activities reports.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Chief for the East Brandywine Township Fire Company report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fire company responded to a total of 88 incidents for the month of October. Forty-two of those were which were fire related. The other 46 were medical incidents. Within East Brandywine Township, we responded to a total of 21 fire calls and 19 medical calls, with an average number of 12.4 people per call. So I don't know where the other 6 tenths of the person went, but they're somewhere. If you see on the report, we had $151,000 in fire damages for the year, or for the month, I'm sorry. That was actually in West Brandywine Township. They had a fire at one of their pump stations, caused a significant amount of damage. So that's what that dollar amount accounts for. For the month, we had four trainings with a total of 22 people in attendance for each one of those events. Just some other quick notes for you. For the month, we just recently had 50 members just get recertified in CPR and AED training. That's the highest number we've had probably in the last 10 to 15 years. So that's something we're very proud of. Also, during that timeframe, we had 25 members attend a 16-hour RIT class. So we provide rapid intervention throughout Chester County to numerous fire companies. So that's one of the requirements that's mandated to have. Some other exciting news, last Wednesday at our company meeting, we had two firefighters that graduated Fire One about two and a half months ago, and they were presented with their firefighter front shields for their helmets, so they've officially progressed up through the ranks. So now they're interior firemen, ready to go. And then, two more things. The next one, we're very proud of, we have another member who's actually graduating Fire One on Thursday evening at 7:00. So he'll be getting his new front shield. 7:00. So he'll be getting his new front piece and be ready to go inside, fight some fires with us. And our big breakfast with Santa event is December 7th at the Firehouse. The time will be posted on the website. So if you and your families want to attend, more than welcome, but call soon. So sells out relatively fast.
Thank you. And for those of you who don't realize how hard it is to, for fire departments to have volunteers, and we have them knocking down the doors, so we're very lucky. Okay, so we're going to turn it over to, to, I guess Luke, I'll turn it over to you for this, for the adoption of the advertised 2019 preliminary budget.
Right. I don't know how extensive a report you would like me to make on this. I will say that the draft preliminary budget, that's before you this evening, is the culmination of five meetings of the Budget Committee, which is pretty substantial in length. It was initially presented in its, we'll call it a preliminary draft, preliminary budget at the last work session of the board supervisors. The draft that's in front of you incorporates feedback that I received from members of the board in the time since. I'm happy to make a more detailed presentation on any portion of the budget. Suffices to say that if it meets with your satisfaction this evening, there's two action items for the board to take action on. First up, the second-class township code requires that a preliminary budget be made available both in our offices, we make it online, and also advertised for public review 20 days prior to the adoption of a final budget. So that means this evening, we will need the board's permission to advertise this, to solicit public feedback. The second action item is there are two anticipated rate increases associated with the draft budget in front of you. One is an increase to the fire services tax, and one is an increase to the recycling fees. Both of those will also need to be advertised. And so my suggestion to the board is, once you've reached a budget that you're satisfied with, that you direct staff and the solicitor to take those actions.
Thank you.
I'm making a motion to adopt the 2020 draft preliminary budget and advertise it.
And the fire service and refuse.
And the increase, yeah, and the increase in the fire refuse tax.
Well, the, yeah, so this would be a motion basically to advertise, not necessarily to adopt. So if I could make that friendly amendment to your motion.
So we have the motion to advertise for the fire service tax, the refuse increase, and the preliminary budget to be advertised for public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then...
Would you like my input now?
Yeah, please. Because, and I'll offer this out to anybody, too. If there's, anybody who's, has anything to say about the budget, please feel free. Right now, we're just advertising it, but go ahead.
I heard, my name's Jim Bucksell. I'm the chair of the Bonsville Mill Park Committee. And I had heard that our budget request for 2020 was significantly cut, and I wanted to give you some insight regarding our request. But we had expected that there would be some discussion about the request, and I attended all of the Budget Committee meetings with the exception of the first organizational meeting and the meeting that you had last week. And my intent was to provide insight and to answer any questions that you may have about the request. It's a significant amount of money. I expected you would want to have some understanding of that. I attended, and unfortunately, I was not at the meeting last week where all the supervisors were there, newly-elected supervisor Ken Hader and the chair of the Budget Committee, Carl Croft. And some decisions were made, final decisions were made regarding the preliminary budget at that meeting, and I couldn't make that meeting. I wasn't aware of it. But I wanted to speak in some fairly general terms tonight to make you aware of our concerns and provide some information that may be useful in your consideration about how we're funding the Bonsville Mill Park project, you know, this year and looking forward. Our request was cut almost in half, down to $90,000. And that, you know, consider that that number includes the $47,500 match for the grants that we're getting from the county and the state this year. And then, there's a $25,000 line item for rental equipment, for the construction work that we're doing. Okay, you take those two things into account, that brings our active materials budget down to $17,500. So I'll start with that. And I'd like to add that we've been good stewards of the township's money. We do not spend our allocated budget just because the funds are there, and we spend wisely. In fact, the last month, as of last month, there's still over $90,000 in our 1919 budget, and we're not going to be spending all of that. So, you know, we have a budget, we have plans. We spend the money wisely on those plans and don't spend just because the money's there. We've made a concerted effort to obtain grants to support the park project, and have obtained $513,000 in grants through 2019, and that doesn't include donated labor, and it does not include the grants that we have coming up for 2020. The grants obtained thus far focus on green space from the state, DCNR and PICO Green Space Grants, that were used to purchase and expand the park, and the county and DCNR grants that we expect to use next year for the garden development. It's very hard to obtain grants for the building rehabilitation work, as I've discussed before. We have made multiple applications to the National Trust for Historic Preservation without success, and one of the problems in that arena is that there's little money out there grant-wise for that, and there's a lot of competition for it. It's hard to get, and our applications were reviewed, and we got very positive feedback on it, but there's a lot of traffic there. Also, along those lines, we've submitted an application to the PHMC for listing. The mill was part of a milling district on Beaver Creek on the National Register, and we have finally gotten some action on that. They're actively reviewing it now. We had a meeting with them at the park in October. Bottom line there is that if we get a determination of eligibility for listing on the National Register, that will open up Keystone Grants to us, which we can use to support the building work. So we actively look for financial support outside of the township. The RETU master plan, RETU master plan, which was prepared for the township for this project, has been followed up to this point. You know, we have a plan. And the cost of the project is an order of magnitude below what was presented in that master plan. We're doing things for a lot less than the projected cost in that plan. A great deal of these savings has come from the considerable amount of time volunteered by a core of skilled volunteers, and the township's contribution, the rehabilitation of the mill buildings has primarily been for materials. Also, note that the cost of developing Bonsville Mill Park is well below what it'd cost to develop the community park, just to put things into perspective. Add to everything above, the financial needs of the park project is being pulled from a recreation fund, and that's one of the good recommendations that came out of your strategic plan last year, that we shift funding of the park from the general fund of the township to this recreation fund. The fund is outside of the general fund, that is required by the state to be annually balanced. It can only be spent on recreation projects. It is not taxpayer dollars. The fund comes from developer fees paid in lieu of providing recreation features in their projects, and it will continue to grow as we add. We have Maple View coming up, we have the Weaver Track. Those are just two that popped to mind, where there'll be additional funds going into that. And I think we're currently over $700,000 in that fund right now. Use of the recreation fund should really be project-driven. It does not play into the cyclic concerns of balancing the township's general fund. It does not compete with the other needs of the township. As long as good stewardship is shown and spending from it, annual requests should be based on the work scope that is achievable for the year of the request. It is important to make good use of the commitment of our volunteer corps. This is another aspect. We have been blessed with the dedication of volunteers with the skills needed to do the work and to keep our costs down, significantly down. The value of the funds provided by the township is significantly multiplied by this volunteer labor. We should not assume that they will be with us forever. We can't, if we can't keep them busy, they will drift to other projects, and it is a realistic concern that we could lose them. We have a dedicated core now that's energized. We want to maintain that. So the fundamental questions that need to be answered regarding the Bonsville Mill Park project are, are we being good steward to the funds provided? I think we are. Is the substantial investment already made by the township in developing the park worthy of protection? We've already invested a lot of money in this. We certainly don't want it to stall. Are there other recreation projects against which the needs of the park project need to be weighed? Are there other recreation projects? I can't think of any off the top of my head in the near future. Does it benefit the public? Yes, it does. We already have many users, and the usage of the park increase has been increasing yearly. And we have educational programs there. We just had three programs this past fall at the park utilizing Building A, which we have occupancy for. And we have a library, a nature library set up in the park where we'll be lending books out. We've been working with the Downingtown Library System to staff that so we can have regular hours there and have kids come in and check out books about nature. And we are partnering, partnering with youth groups that have programs at the park and organizations like the Chester County Trail Club and LLB, which has an outdoor program. And they can also provide service for main trail maintenance and things like that. So we understand the need of the board to understand the big picture and where the projected costs for the completion of the project, where we're going, and what's the framework for what's left to do. And we, along those lines, we've developed a comprehensive scope of work this past summer, and we're currently working on cost estimates to go along with that so that we can provide you. This will be a modification of what was in the RETU plan, which we're already working well below. But we can give you an idea of the work that's left to do and what we anticipate the cost of that will be, using our current model, using contracted laborers or otherwise. So it's my understanding that being a capital fund, the use of the recreation fund is more flexible with regard to the annual tracking requirements, i.e. the general fund, and that there should be some room for further consideration of the park budget request going into next year. So I'd like you to consider bumping our request back up to the original amount. But beyond that, I would like to come back and present to you our comprehensive scope of work and cost for the project, and talk about what our 2020 budget should be and what we, what we need to do to keep people busy. So that's, that's my request to you.
And I will touch upon just briefly, since you are here and in front of us. I can tell you, this was not one, one sole person's decision to say, "Cut it in half."
Well, I'm sure it was the three of you at least.
Well, and there was, there was outside input that was added to this as well. So, but one thing that was reminded of me was that at our last year's budget meeting, we did discuss, you guys had started out at a $90,000, give or take, I don't know exactly, and needed to double it last year, and was reminded that I had said to you last year, it would be more of a loan going forward for next year, not, "We're going to double this every single year." So we clearly, you know, stewards, or we, have to be responsible for all the money in the township. And if, if everybody that came to us said, "Double what I had last year, double what we had last year," then we're going to have a problem. And I understand you're not, you're different. You're the parks. It's not, it's not taxpayer money. I get that. But it's still money in the township, and we're responsible for it. So that's one of the things that was, was discussed, and as well, the grant was brought up. And as you said, if we need to touch upon this later, we're well aware of it. And, you know, the grant, the grant could be a separate item.
The 47.5 could be a separate item?
Could be.
Okay.
So, trust me when I tell you, it's not, you know, not one in particular person getting picked on. This is across the board. The board sat with, with the Budget Committee and came up with some recommendations, and it was agreed upon. That's, that's...
Well, I would assume that whatever was funneled into the last meeting from the Budget Committee came through Carl Croft. My understanding was it was Carl Croft and the three supervisors, Ken, and I guess Scott and Luke.
There was the future supervisor, Carl Croft, and, and, yes.
I mean, I would recommend maybe coming back after January, after Ken's sworn in, and having, maybe Ken could join you in the committee, and you could show him the, your master plans.
Well, I...
It isn't, it's not saying, I mean, it's not part of the budget, so to speak, so it is something that maybe could, could be looked at.
Yeah, it's not part of the general fund. It's not part of the annual budget that you need to balance. And that's, that's the flexi, where the flexibility comes in, that we could look at it towards the beginning of the next year. But we, we want to do it early enough where we can have the plan for, for what we're doing. And I, I can send you a copy of my, of my presentation notes, which summarizes everything I spoke about. I think, you know, we're not competing against any other recreation project for the near future. There's $700,000 in that fund. We're making good use of the money, and we have a dedicated, a bunch of volunteers that we want to keep motivated and active. And we will continue to look for the grants. And we, we have not slacked off on that. We have been active in doing that. So we are looking for other funds, but we want to, we want to keep things moving at the same time. So...
I understand. And you can see a lot of work has been done in the last year, you know, more than, than the others. So, and everyone does appreciate all the volunteers. This is something that we want to bring up as a separate line item, even though it's not part of the budget. We wanted it to be more of a reminder that it was said that it would go from 90 to the 179 for one year, and then we'll revisit that, and then we'll go on a need basis. But whether that's the only project now from recreational doesn't justify enough to say, "Let's just, you know, use that fund just for the Bonsville Mill." And we have to look at, for all, you know, throughout the whole township. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
Well, we have a lot of momentum in the park, and we're getting a lot of interest from the public, and we're developing these partnerships with outside groups, and that will just continue to build momentum. So I'd like to keep it moving, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments about the, about the preliminary budget? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the intermunicipal agreement processing and marketing of recycled materials. I'll turn that over to Luke and Ms. Westy.
Mr. Chairman, you should probably put on the record...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...intain a motion to table item 10B.
Yeah, so the Corleena Developer Agreements. As I stated earlier in the meeting, we are one supervisor light. Both supervisor winners and I discussed at the beginning of the meeting the situation, and we both agreed that it would be who of us beneficial to everybody if we were to table this until an agreeable meeting date. And unfortunately, I can't tell you what that would be because there's so many people that this has to get brought to, including both parties as well as supervisors and staff. So, so...
Do they, do you have anything that you want to say? Do they want to speak while they're here, or?
Can we have an agreement then, since this is off the agenda, that you...
Can we have an agreement then, since this is off the agenda, that you are not going to entertain public comments? After the, you have a Section 15, public comment on agenda items, and it's no longer on the agenda, tell the lawyers to go home, and we'll come back next time.
Yeah, I would agree with that because it won't be an agenda item, so yes, I will agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Meaning, we're not going to talk about it, so it's not going to be an agenda item to talk about in the, when I offer to the, to the public to speak.
Does he want, does he want us to talk while he's here?
Well, I think you ought to put on the floor first a motion to table, if that's what your intention is.
So, so let's put...
And you can accept comment on that motion.
Yeah, so let's put a motion, I make a motion to table this discussion until further notice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then you'd have a second to...
Mr. Chairman, a simple question. Can you give us some idea when we can anticipate the minutes from the last meeting being available to the public?
I would have to assume, this week, next week?
Next week.
Next week?
And the video references that there were various agreements that were presented to the board for the board's review. When may we have a copy of those so that the public can comment on them before you vote on them?
We can make sure we forward you copies of the agreements.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rose.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to Luke for the intermunicipal agreement processing, marketing, recyclable materials.
Thank you. This is the last action item related to our planned transition from Republic Services as our waste hauler into AJ Blazinski beginning January 1st. We've already established a date for collection, a day of the week for collection. We have bid this out, we've gone with the apparent low bidder. We've done most of our diligence, there is still one matter yet to be resolved, and that is the routing of the recycled materials that are collected. If you'll recall, the bid specifications provided an option for the haulers to choose a materials recovery facility of their choice, or to allow us to direct them to ship to a materials recovery facility of our choice within 30 miles. Everybody opted for our choice, so our choice, or my recommendation to the board, is that we join a multi-municipal, or I guess more accurately, an intermunicipal agreement with Chester County and a number of our surrounding communities. They have an agreement called the Processing and Marketing Agreement, wherein they bid out this, and the higher volumes associated by working collectively means we get a lower tipping fee. The reason I've added Tom as a fellow on this agenda item is that there's a number of legal tasks that need to be done for us to join this group. First, there is an, there's a draft of the agreement that I would need the board's permission to execute, and I know Kristen is working to, with the county, to clean up some of the language in there to make it clear on how one joins or leaves this group. And then the second matter is, as with all intermunicipal agreements, we do need to pass an ordinance to join that. Is that a fair assessment of the two deliverables tonight, Tom?
It is, and I think the board, if you want to, well, I think we should defer consideration of actual approval of the agreement until we advertise the intergovernmental cooperation ordinance.
Okay, so the action item tonight is, is permission to advertise an ordinance for...
Intergovernmental cooperation, correct. And then we'll, if there's enough time, we'll have it on your next agenda for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Subdivision and zoning applications, we have 100 Waring Drive.
Good gentleman.
Please just state your name for the record. I just, I just gave your address, so you're good there.
George Malley, 100 Waring Drive, Keystone. I have some documents that I can share about my...
People might have the same.
I'll have the... Couple more people, just, might as well.
Yeah, I don't need one, if you don't have enough.
Might.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here goes, how about that?
So, as I stated before, my name's George Malley, I live at Keats Glen, just right up the road here. My address is 100 Waring Drive. My family and I would like to add a pool to our backyard around 500 square feet in size. In order to do this, we request a variance to setbacks from the water line of the pool. We do this through ask of a hardship. Our yard size is a quarter acre, and in normal situations, a 500-square-foot pool could be accommodated in that size of yard, but because of how our yard is shaped, it's long and narrow, and where our house is placed, we're having difficulty meeting the 25-foot setback on at least three of those sides. We are proposing a 10-foot variance from the north side, a 10-foot variance from the west side, and a 3-foot variance from the south side, meaning it'll be 15 feet from the north side, 15 feet from the west, and 22 feet from the south side. The west side and the south side, but it's a common area, so it's not a shared property line with any neighbors. My north side does have a neighbor. In that packet, I have a letter from him stating his understanding of the standard setback and his willingness to, you know, allow us to potentially get closer to that property line. Aside from that, we're meeting most all other regulations set forth by the township. We are coming well under the 1,000-square-feet maximum impervious allotment. We're only at about 740 square feet with the pool. That's including the surface area of the pool, the coping, and the proposed patio, and we are well under the total amount of structure that can be built in my development. I believe it's 45%. We are coming in just about 33.4%. That's including my house, driveway, deck, and the proposed pool. I talked a lot. I'm not sure if there's any questions.
I think my only question was, did you mention it to your neighbor, which you just said you did? So I think that was where I was going to go with mine. I don't see a problem with it. Obviously, we're not the judge and jury that would be for the zoning board, but I'm okay with it, and, you know, wish you well with them.
I mean, you're asking for our support?
Of course, and recommendations, obviously. I don't want to do anything outside of the realm of possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I think neighbor's the most important thing out there, to be honest with you.
Agreed.
Aside from, we just met on another one where it was very close to the house, but other than that...
It actually was a very similar property. The other one was a corner lot, had open space behind it, had a street on the one side, and only had one neighbor, so...
Yep.
Very similar situation of that. The only thing I would like to make a comment on, and I'm Mike Nellio from Anthony Sildon Pools, contracted with the homeowner, is we obviously came in front of the planning commission first, and this is a revised plan from the planning commission, because they suggested a modification, which we did, a couple modifications, which Mr. Malley has already explained that we did already make, you know...
So are you going back to the planning commission, or are you guys...
No, they just suggested that we, and we agreed to those suggestions.
Okay, and you, and you have...
We brought the revised plan here to this, and it'll be, obviously, in front of the zoning hearing board.
The original proposal was, we were going to actually meet one of the setbacks. The south side, we could get to the 25 feet, but that would encroach a little bit closer to my neighbor. He was okay with that, but the, you know, the board...
We would have been 12, and we would have met the 25 on the Branton Drive side, and the planning board said, "Because of the neighbor there, would you mind pushing it to 15?"
Understood.
Which then makes us get a variance from the other side, too, which now is 22 instead of 25, which is the required full setback.
Well, thank you, and obviously, good luck.
Cool. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Remember, planning commission did not follow our recommendations.
They did not?
No.
What do they, what didn't they do?
They asked them to slide the building down closer to the Waring Drive, so it's more behind the building, and the setback line where the 12 feet was showing, that was for, you want that to be slid down away from property line where the existing houses.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, but I was at that meeting, and that was, I haven't written down here exactly the things...
We both saw that.
That were requested. We can't, we're within four foot of an existing deck, which is from a structural standpoint the closest that we will go from a standpoint of not undermining a footer or a pier, and that was brought up at that meeting. And the only thing that I remember, and George may say, was that the planning commission asked us to move it three foot towards Branton. Nobody talked about bringing it closer because we can't bring it closer.
Not closer to the building, moving it to the south, closer to Branton Drive.
Which we did.
Right.
Our revised plan did that. That's not, that's the original...
That's, that's the original plan.
Yeah, I emailed the, I was unaware that this meeting was moved Thursday or Tuesday, so this morning, so I emailed a revised plan to George and Scott. It's right here.
Can you do it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking at my show.
And Jim?
We're not opposed to...
I was just looking at that up there. There's about a clock.
Does anybody care?
Okay. Okay, bye. Take it back. I'll go to the planning board.
All good, all good.
I'll make a resolution to support your application for your zoning hearing board subject to the compliance with the recommendations of the planning commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any updates on the ordinance test?
No, I, the meeting is next Wednesday, this Wednesday, tomorrow, sorry.
And then, any public comments on the agenda items for this evening?
If I may, it's not an agenda item, but I wanted to mention, and I forgot to do it during my report, the reason for Supervisor Fisher's absence is, is due to his wife Connie learned today that she's got surgery pending tomorrow for an abdominal issue. We found out, Jay found out late today that the issue is much more serious than they originally expected, or were told by their doctor or her doctor, and I just ask that everybody keep Connie Fisher, and of course Jay, and their thoughts and prayers. It's, it's a more serious situation than originally anticipated, but hopefully, they're, they've caught this issue early enough that it's not going to be serious. I'd rather not say, "I understand what the issue is, Jay told me," but I just ask that everybody keep Jay and Connie in their prayers over the next several days.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none. Just wanted to make a notice, the executive session of the Board of Supervisors will follow this meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.